Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two issues I want to bring up today. First, let me just say, 10 years ago today, I climbed on a plane to fly back from Mosul, Iraq, after leading 200 great Americans combat operations over there. Grateful to be alive, grateful that God has blessed me and blessed our country. But I'm mindful of difficult decisions and having to make decisions that are hard and they're scrutinized. But that's led me into my next set of comments. Mr. Chairman and fellow board members, I'm going to direct my comments to you and to you alone right now, not to the audience. After much reflection and prayer over these past, this past week and past several days, I wanted to bring up several, something I think is very serious and difficult and very hard to discuss, but it's something I believe is necessary and critically important to the future of our county and the citizens that we represent. With all due respect, I have lost confidence in Mr. Wancheck's leadership and his ability to lead our employees. The county administrator's job is to ensure that decisions made by this board are implemented and followed. That has not happened, and that responsibility lies with Mr. Wancheck. I'm prepared to make a three-part motion to remove Mr. Wancheck as the county administrator effective immediately, to appoint a temporary interim replacement, and to appoint a board, a member of this board, as a representative to oversee the necessary change in leadership. I'm making this motion because it's my opinion that our county administrator is no longer able to execute the wishes and directions given by this board. I came onto this board with an open mind about Mr. Wancheck. As recently as this, earlier this year, I voted to extend his contract for one year. However, in the last several months, I have observed and become aware of a number of systemic leadership problems that are both concerning and have led to my loss of confidence in our administration. What I have observed is profoundly disappointing. Most recently, our board gave clear direction regarding an issue in my district involving Micler Beach. Our direction guidance that we approved was not followed by staff, to the detriment of our citizens, to my neighbors, and those who I live by every day. It is my opinion that our authority as a board and as the elected representatives of the public has been undermined by failure to implement and follow our decisions. What followed was a bureaucratic paralysis that has led to utter confusion among the public and our staff for the past several weeks. That is absolutely unacceptable. I will not sit by and allow it to occur. I answer to the voters of St. Johns County as do each of you, and I'm not going to be undermined by staff, either passively or actively, when they fail to follow our direction as a board. I personally like Mr. Wancheck. I think he is a good man. I think he acts with class. I think he's an honorable man, a man that has done many great things for our county over his very long tenure. He is a professional, and he approaches this job with class, and I appreciate him. But this is not personal, it's business. All of this was avoidable and preventable, yet we're here today. Two employees sitting in this room today answer to this board directly, Mr. Wancheck, the county administrator, and Mr. McCormick, our county attorney. When we have a leadership failure of this magnitude, it is our responsibility to address it and to correct it. The voters hold us accountable, and we hold these two men accountable. That's why I'm prepared to do this job that I was elected to do by bringing up these concerns and by holding our leaders, who are direct reports to this board, accountable. So, Mr. Chairman, if you allow, I'm going to bring forward the following motion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you allow, I move for the immediate removal of Mr. Wancheck as the county administrator per the terms and conditions of his contract. I move for the appointment of the clerk of court and comptroller as a temporary interim. I further move for the appointment of a member of this board to oversee this transition process. I spoke to the clerk of court over the weekend, informed him of my intent to make this motion today and ask if he would take a temporary leave of absence from his duties as a clerk of court to serve as interim. As an elected constitutional officer who's been elected by the public, was appointed by a popular governor, and as a comptroller of the county who has an accounting and law background, I believe that he's best suited to assume this temporary role as interim county administrator while overseeing the process of finding a permanent replacement.
Commissioner Barker, if you would, let's take this one motion at a time, if you would. First motion? If you would mind repeating it.
For the immediate removal of Mr. Wancheck as the county administrator per the terms and conditions of his contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Legal?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I've asked Deputy County Attorney Regina Ross to go up and, I think, get a copy of Mr. Wancheck's contract. I will note that there is a Florida statute, Section 12573, which I believe, I believe that the county administrator ordinance and perhaps also contract may, I think, follow. And where I'm going to, 125.73, and Commissioner Barker, you might, if you have your little thing, you might pull this up, too. The relevant part, I think, is "The county administrator shall be qualified by administrative and executive experience and ability to serve as the chief administrator of the county." He shall be appointed by, okay, I'll keep going. Let's see. "He shall be appointed by an affirmative vote of not less than three members of the Board of County Commissioners and may be removed at any time by an affirmative vote upon notice of not less than three members of the board." It's phrased a little awkward, so three, a majority vote can act to remove. But it does say "upon notice and after a hearing, if such, be requested by the county administrator." So, there are sort of two issues there that really don't go into detail, but one of them is, can be removed at any time, but as a caveat, "upon notice." Doesn't say exactly what notice is there, but it does say "after a hearing, if such, be requested by the county administrator." So, I just wanted to point that out to the board before the board proceeds further.
Thank you. Commissioner Barker?
Mr. Chairman, I've made a motion, stands. I understand Mr. McCormick's understanding, obviously, there's some procedural issues here. My motion, if the board chooses to follow, if not, but my motion stands. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead, and we'll open up for public comment.
At this time, we'll open up for public comment. Public comment? Mr. Chairman, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment.
Public comment now closed. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Legal?
Yeah, and Commissioners here, I just want to give my advice, and the board will act how it acts. I do read that language, "upon notice." I am concerned that that notice may be, may be viewed by a court of competent jurisdiction as perhaps a meaningful notice, in other words, perhaps a number of days or some period of time. And then the phrase about "after hearing, if such, be requested by the county administrator." So, it would be my advice, should the board proceed to vote on this motion, that there should be an inquiry to the county administrator about a hearing, if such, be requested by the county administrator.
Thank you. Commissioner Johns?
Through the chair, Mr. McCormick, what legally defensible notice do you recommend?
I think certainly at a subsequent meeting would be, I think, adequate notice. Whether there could be a lesser time, a special meeting, I would say same day I would have a concern about, and sort of almost an immediate-type thing, I would have a very significant concern about.
Commissioner Dean?
I worked for a collegial body for 21 years, and during that time, it was my position that if that body did no longer want me serving as their executive director, I would graciously resign. Depending on how this vote goes, I have every confidence that if Mr. Wancheck lacks our confidence, I think that he would not file a hearing or challenge our decision. I have too much respect for him to think he would do otherwise, so I think we should go forward with this vote.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion, comments? We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And it moves forward 5-0. Would you please go ahead, and your second motion, Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move for the appointment of the clerk of court as comptroller, and county comptroller as a temporary interim.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. A motion by Commissioner Barker, a second by Commissioner Dean. Question for you. You talked and discussed with him, Commissioner Barker, he is willing and able to do so?
He is. I spoke to him as recently as Sunday evening. He indicated, if called upon by this body, he would want to serve on a temporary interim basis.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We'll open up for public comment.
At this time, we'll open up for public comment. Any public comment? Mr. Chairman, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment.
Public comment now closed. We're back to the board. Legal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first, let me say, I know that this is a, I guess, just a sensitive topic. I do want to understand sort of the arrangement. Would it be, as far as we can determine, I mean, would it be sort of a temporary absence from the clerk of court? I guess what I'm looking at is, you know, normally, I would like to look through-
Patrick, if I can interrupt, not to interrupt you. I think that, obviously, there are details we need to sort out. Obviously, that's why I've made, as part of this motion, or a third motion, that we appoint a board member to help oversee that. But obviously, there's some procedural issues that would have to occur. The clerk would have to step down. He'd have to go through whatever processes he has to do. What I'm making a motion about today is for us as a board to appoint him. He can not accept that appointment. He can accept it. We can move on to someone else. But at this point, he is willing to do that. He understands the processes he needs to follow through his legal counsel. So, that's, that's the motion. Obviously, there's some things we need to work out, which I'm sure you'll be involved in, so.
All right, and we have a motion and a second. We're through public comment. Any further discussion, comments? That two passes 5-0. Go ahead and mention your, read your last one.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we appoint a member of this board to oversee this transition process and work through some of the details that have been brought up today by our counsel.
All right, Commissioner, we have a, don't discuss until we have a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barker, a second by Commissioner Dean. Is there any discussion, questions? We're going to choose that person before we vote. I think we need to have somebody in mind, that's for sure, and I would go ahead and open this up for public comment, Mr. Vice Chairman.
One thing about that is, I think Commissioner Waldron brings up a good point. In other words, that might even be, it could be all done in one motion, or the concept could be done with this motion, and then the particular thing and another.
I like conceptually, and then we'll go personal.
Sure.
So, let's, let's go ahead and move through with a public comment on it. We have a conceptual theory, a concept that's been placed forward. We'll move forward with action in a moment. Any public comment?
At this time, I'll ask for public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, we'll close public comment.
The public comment now closed. We have a motion and a second open for any further discussion amongst the board. Seeing none, please vote. I assume now, at this point, we will, I think it should be handled now, because we're here, that this board is not scheduled to meet for another two weeks unless a special meeting is called. I would go ahead and ask for nominations for the individual to sit as the, in this particular position.
Well, if I may, I would like to recommend that the chairman serve in that capacity. You are the longest-serving commissioner. You're the current chairman. You've already served a previous term, so I think you're the most qualified and the most experienced to serve in this role, so that would be my recommendation or motion.
I'll second that. Well, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Anybody else willing to, that may be fit? We'll open that up for public comment as well.
At this time, we'll hear public comment. Public comment? Mr. Chairman, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment.
With no public comment, we're now back to the board. I very seriously like to give opportunity for any discussion. Seeing none, please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. I'll be the board's liaison and interface. All right. Very serious thing. Thank you, Commissioner Barker. I know that was very difficult for you. Anything else further?
No, sir.
All right. I will give my report at this point. Kind of tough, but food for thought. On November 20th, that is tomorrow, University of Florida IFIS agents and specialists will be hosting a meeting focused on two important topics, be dealing with research and extension needs in Hastings, their Hastings unit. This meeting is scheduled to go from 10 to 2:30. Likewise, the second thing they will address is the results from the potato yield quality and nutritional studies. A very important one is the nutritional studies that have been done by Dr. Liu, especially in trials in regard to the need for phosphorus. On November 14th, Putnam St. Johns County Farm Bureau, as well as UF IFIS, conducted a legislative tour of farms and research in the TCAA, that is, the tri-county agricultural area. We had a farm city luncheon and recognized there John Revels of William Revels Farms in St. Johns County with a CARES Award, which is County Alliance for Responsible Environmental Stewardship. I just want to send my congratulations to John and Jenny Revels. We had very good participation in that tour, and hopefully, it'll be profitable to those that attended. Likewise, there has been a diagnostic lab that has been established to assist commercial producers at the CalPim branch unit, identifying pathogens in crops. They'll be able to identify bacteria, virus, and fungus to be able to help growers with those different disease pressures. I just, I want to, I want to go to something we addressed that was brought to this board this morning in regard to parking on Ponte Vedra Boulevard. From a stance, it was, it was mentioned that we have an ordinance that disallows that. I don't know what this board's prerogative would be, its desire would be, but if we have and can be lenient upon that for a short time, if there is no, if there are no concerns, or if there are concerns that just need to be brought forward, I just wanted to put it in my comments to make sure we brought it back up. Is there any, any desire to move forward with that? Ms. Crosby brought that forward this morning. Commissioner Waldron?
Sorry. I was going to just ask legal if there's a way to suspend the ordinance for, till the end of the project, or, I don't really know if there's smart parking.
Mr. Chair, through, to Commissioner Waldron, I believe the board, I think, could make a request that, that ordinance not be enforced for a certain portion, for a certain period of time, due to a very special circumstance. I think it could, it could be handled that way. It could be, it could be handled by an actual formal amendment or revision to the ordinance, you know, bring the ordinance back, advertise it, et cetera. I think, I think it could be handled more informally by having the board request, request that the ordinance not be enforced, again, for a certain period of time in a certain geographic area.
Can we have that ordinance here before we depart today, so that we can have that read and understood, and what, what parameters we can exercise?
Sure, we'll get a copy. We should be able to get that fairly quickly. If not, the board could have a brief recess.
We might have a brief recess in order to address that, because I think that's a needful matter to be addressed at this point, if it's the desire of the board. Commissioner Barker?
Give him a microphone. I think it is. I think it's something that, there is some controversy about this in Ponte Vedra, as far as the parking, but I think, based on the situation we have going on in Micler, I think there is a need to look at adjusting this. So, if we could look at that, have you bring forward whatever you can, that'd be great.
Commissioner Dean?
If we do go forward, I think, based on several experiences in the past, I think it would be good and wise that we notice those homeowners along Ponte Vedra Beach Boulevard that we are considering doing this, rather than, rather than they show up after the fact, reading it in the newspaper or hearing it on TV. I think we owe it to the homeowners along that stretch. I have, I have no problem considering suspending the ordinance, but I, in fact, I think I have heard from several homeowners who've indicated a willingness to do that. But there also may be a number who would be substantially upset, and I feel like we would owe them notice that we would be considering it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Waldron?
Would it be, just through the chair, would it be something we'd want to maybe look at next meeting, that we could have it in front of us, we can make notice to them that we're going to discuss it, put it on the agenda, and they would know to contact us?
I'd like to suggest that. I believe that's December 3rd, and I believe this activity is ongoing until at least early February. So, I mean, we would have, I mean, I think that would be soon enough, that at least we'd be responding, and we would be providing adequate notice that we're considering it.
Commissioner Barker, what is your preference, being the district commissioner?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think that there is some angst about getting this resolved very quickly. I do agree with Commissioner Dean. I think there is, there are multiple, multiple layers to this. I think having, making a quick decision to address the county, the parking situation there would be, would certainly satisfy some of the citizens, but I do think we need to do some notice, and, you know, I think we need to get back in the business of noticing some of these residents that they could be affected. This is serious, and, you know, we're going to definitely have some concern. So, I think if we maybe move forward with Commissioner Dean's suggestion of giving some notice and maybe having a meeting, at least we can hear everybody and go from there, so.
So, we'll put this forward as an agenda item for December 3rd. We'll put it on, on the agenda, and we'll have it at that point. If you could spread the word that that's, that's how we'll be following through. I would like to have a copy of the ordinance before we leave, so we can review it. The other thing I had, and I, on my list, was ethics training, and then when I left, departed for lunch, I saw I had on my, my desk, ethics training options. Knew it was coming close to that time. Just, I didn't read through it, I didn't have time to, but I'd like to, I think we've had it in the past, and offer it to the board in person. Is that still an option?
Yes, I think Deputy County Attorney Regina Ross had sent out a memo to each of the commissioners. There are a number of options there. One of them is sort of an online four-hour course, I think. There's a eight-hour DVD thing. There's also the opportunity, if any one commissioner, or if more than one commissioner would request training from the office of the county attorney, we would be happy to provide that training, face-to-face. Normally, if we do that, and if there are more than one commissioners, you know, we would do a notice of that, et cetera. And so, Mr. Chair, I hope that answers your question. That, that's certainly an option.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to make sure everybody knows those options are available, and it's, I've enjoyed going through it with staff. I think it's been very profitable. Each of them took a different segment for an hour, and it was very helpful. We offered it to the board last year, and I think Commissioner Waldron and I were the only ones to go to that meeting, and actually, it was very, very, very helpful to hear some insight, as well as questions. The last thing I have on my list is just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and just thankful for what the Lord has done for us. Amen. Return to administration.
If we can go back to the last item, dealing with Field of Dreams. I've been informed by staff that we need to add an additional motion to the board's action. It's a motion, it would be a motion to authorize the county administrator or designate it issuing and executing a purchase order to gain time in the amount of $156,0244 through the U.S. Communities Contract Number 2017001134.
Thank you, and we'll, so move. I have a motion by Commissioner Waldron. Is there a second by Commissioner Johns? Any discussion? We'll have to have public comment.
At this time, we'll open up for public comment. Public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, we'll close public comment.
All right, that was on Agenda Item Number 12, an additional motion to move that money properly and expeditiously, as needed, need be. So, we have a motion and a second with no further discussion. Please vote. It passes 5-0. Agenda Item 12, additional motion has been presented. Anything else from administration?
Yes, sir. Just a point of clarification, I guess, two things relative to my own situation. One would be, Patrick, I assume that's without cause, because that carries great significance into my contract.
That, that's what I would presume as well.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then, secondly, I heard the motion effectively immediately. Would you like me to be gone by 5 o'clock, or would you prefer that I come in for, say, through the end of the week and tie off some loose ends? It's all about a smooth and orderly transition. So, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Commissioner Barker?
I would suggest to the board that Mr. Wancheck is a professional, and he will take care of the needs of this county, while he's still here as a county employee, and I would ask that he come in this week and work with you, Mr. Chairman, in tying up some loose ends.
Mr. Chair and Commission, if the board would allow, I would like to have a brief conversation with Mr. Wancheck before the board votes on this, if the board would allow.
Sure, please. We'll take a, let's take a five-minute recess. I know everybody would like to be anxious, but this is a, let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll, I think it's time to cool down for just a minute, anyway. We'll meet back at 2:08. Now reconvene the regular meeting, November 19th, 2019, of the St. Johns County Board of County Commissioners. It is 2:08. We've had an opportunity. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there are just a few issues in front of the board. One is, effectively, what does immediately mean? Could that mean through the end of the week for the, for Mr. Wancheck to kind of tie up some loose ends, et cetera? The other aspect is, the motion did not say anything for cause, which I would presume would mean without cause. I just had a brief discussion with Mr. Wancheck. I think it might be helpful that, you know, if the board could, could make a, sort of a, a position on that, without cause, if that is the board's position, just to have that in the minutes. The other thing, again, that I have some concern about is the "upon notice" and "after hearing, if such is requested by the county administrator." I did speak very briefly with Mr. Wancheck. I don't know if he feels comfortable addressing those issues or not with the board, but I just wanted to tell you, I'll just be frank, and this is very awkward, that I, now I'm speaking as your, as your county attorney, I do have a little bit of concern about, you know, sort of through the week, you know, if this were to be contested later on, you know, the notice issues and that type of thing. You know, just generally, it's not a good HR, you know, policy in that circumstances, if, if an action is going to be contested. But I don't know if Mr. Wancheck, you know, would be prepared or not to, you know, to mention whether he feels, he would feel inclined to, to contest. Obviously, he would be entitled to seek legal counsel, you know, I think, to brief him on that. So, I guess the first thing is, you know, I think Mr. Wancheck has requested this, again, for the board- this, again, for the board, the board's clarification on the cause, or, you know, with cause or without cause. The board could just keep the motion as it was, and I will tell you, my position as the county attorney, having heard that, I would presume that is without cause, but it might be helpful for the, the board to, to clarify that, for start.
Commissioner Barker?
If I can inquire, is your recommendation, it is without cause. So do we need to do an amended motion? Do I need to say that as a reason for the motion?
I think it would be helpful to put that, I think that would be helpful to put that into the, into the record, if that truly is the intent of the maker of the motion, the second, and the board as a whole. I think that would be helpful. And i- if the board needs any recommendations, what, you know, cause is, we can, we can read those, but...
If, if I can be clear, I've already said it was for without cause.
Oh, did you say that?
It was for without cause.
Okay, maybe I just, I, maybe it...
So, so my question to you, Patrick, is do I need to, do we need to amend the motion that we've already voted on?
Right. I think if that was actually in the motion, and I, I just...
No, it, it was not in the motion.
Right.
But that, those were the reasons I stated.
Right, I understand. I think it would be helpful to just sort of amend the, it's basically the same motion, and just to include without, without cause.
We, 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 hold on a second. Let's, let's stop here for a minute. We have already gone through four motions.
Yes.
And I, we're not amending a motion that's already been voted on. If there is something to desire to be done, if, if the commissioner is saying now that he would, that it is his intent to have it without cause, then we can put that forward. That'll be number five. But I'm not going back in order and redoing something that has already been decided.
Understood.
So, so let's, I would, for, for the education of all that are here, let's read what cause is.
And I apologize, it, it refers to a Florida statute, which I'm looking up here very quickly. All right, Commissioners, the, for the purposes of severance pay, which is in the county administrator's contract, there's a provision, in accordance with applicable provisions of Florida statutes, the county administrator shall not be entitled to severance pay if he is terminated by the board for misconduct as defined by, it gives the statute, section 443 dot 036, Pren 29. That's a fair, you know, I could read through the whole thing. It includes, but is not limited to, conduct demonstrating conscious disregard of the employee's interest, found to be in deliberate violation or disregard of the reasonable standards of behavior. Examples of that, such conduct may include, but is not limited to, willful damage to employer's property, theft, you know, that kind of thing. Then further carelessness or negligence to a degree, or recurrence that manifest culpability or wrongful intent, or sort of a conscious thing. Chronic absenteeism, or tardiness, et cetera. Willful and deliberate violation of a standard or regulation by the, of the state, or by an employee of, of the employer license or certified by the state. A violation of an employer's rule unless the, of an employer's rule unless the claimant can demonstrate that, and there's some exceptions there. I will tell you, reading through there and having listened to Commissioner Barker's motion and I think description, it would be my sense that it would not fall under that misconduct for that purpose.
Commissioner Dean?
My opinion, that Mr. Barker's motion raised no issue of misconduct whatsoever. I want this on the record. I want it clear, in my opinion, Mr. Barker zeroed in on one phrase and one phrase only, and that is, he lost confidence in the current administrator's conduct of the office. To me, that's, has nothing to do with misconduct. It has nothing to do with being terminated with cause. We're trying to do this as gracefully and, and gentlemanly as possible. What we have done is we have five votes that agree with Commissioner Barker, that he had lost confidence, and therefore we took the action without cause to terminate the employment of Mr. Wancheck. It's pretty cut and dry to me, and I think we need to move ahead.
Absolutely. Want to make sure it is clear. Commissioner Barker?
And if I can just reiterate, this was not for cause. Like I said, and I'll reiterate, this is difficult, but I did lose confidence in the leadership ability. I appreciate what Mr. Wancheck has done for the county, I think we all do, but this is a business decision. This is not because of misconduct. This is not because of anything that can be characterized as, as, as anything on his behalf. It's simply a leadership issue. I wish him well, and we, I look forward to us moving on.
And I think it's clear from the reading of that. Do you have a motion that you would like to make, and say, I mean, it's obvious to say without cause, if you would make that clear in form of a motion, we will move forward with it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, at this time, with your, with your permission, I'll make a motion to characterize the immediate removal of Mr. Wancheck as without cause.
Or misconduct.
Or misconduct. Without cau, without cause, and without any misconduct.
That's correct.
All right, have a motion? Second?
Public comment.
Motion by Commissioner Barker, a second by Commissioner Johns. I believe this is the fifth one along the way here. Do we, we'll have public comment. Mr. Vice Chairman?
At this time, we'll open up for public comment. Public comment. Mr. Chairman, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment at this time.
Public comment closed. No further discussion. Please vote. All right, now we're going back to the premise that started even the delay, and that was regarding to the word immediate, I think is what we, has been, verbiage has been used in the first motion, the immediate removal. What does that mean today? Does that mean the latter part of this week? I think that needs to be decided at this point as well. Any comments? Any, when I, I hear immediate, that means immediate, that's, that's quickly. And I would, just in my own personal opinion, I would say, although I have complete confidence, I think at this point that it'd probably be best to move on, and that'd be today. That would be my opinion in regard to what was said earlier in regard to the first motion, but I don't know, I'll yield to the rest of the board. Any comments, discussion? I will, I will move that that be done today at 5:00. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Johns. Any further discussion? Open it up for public comment, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we'll open up for public comment. Public comment. Mr. Chairman, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment.
Is it closed? No further discussion. If you would, please vote. And that passes 5-0. All righty. Anything else that we need to settle here? Mr. McCormick?
Mr. Chair, the board has made a series of decisions today. I will note, I, I think for, for the request for a hearing, I have not heard that. I think Mr. Wancheck has had at least an opportunity for that. I don't know if, I, I would just put it out there, if there is a request for a hearing, you know, Mr. Wancheck may want to indicate on that or not. Or say nothing.
Patrick, to be honest with you, I don't even know what the significance of that is right now.
Okay.
My, my intent has never been to work for a board who doesn't want me as administrator, but I don't want to waive any rights or anything at this point in time.
Understood.
Not that I'm contemplating any, any such action.
Thank you. Miss, Mr. Chair and board members, and Commissioner Barker, I'm trying to help the board effectuate these decisions. It does sound like there may be a little bit of time to work out, basically, the, the employment or contractual, or whatever arrangement there will be from, I think, the, the deputy clerk to, to come in as a separate duty, work as the county administrator. I'm concerned about a little time period gap, though, and I'd just like to go here with the board. The county attorney is a statutory position. I'm sorry, the, the county administrator is a statutory position. There are certain, in addition to the statutes, county ordinances which pertain. It would be my recommendation, either formally, I would recommend formally, but if not formally, then informally, to have a senior member of staff, sort of acting county administrator until the, and it may be within a day or two, to, to work out the arrangement with the, the other individual. So is that something the board would consider to do?
Let's hold up on that. I've got some comments. Commissioner Johns?
So that everybody's on the same page, I'd like a reasonable timeline to expect either a request for a hearing or not through the, through the attorney's office. What days, weeks, in order to anticipate whether we need to move forward with a hearing or not expect to, to receive a request for a hearing? How much time do we need to...
Thank you. Commissioner Johns, my sense on that would be, if there were a request, that it would be, if there were to be a hearing, it would probably, you know, be on the December 3rd meeting, unless the board wanted to do a special meeting. And I think to prepare for that, I think there, there, I would recommend notice of the request, not later than a close of business, the following, you know, the next Monday. That next Monday being...
25th.
25th, at, at noon, let's say. That, I think that, that could be a, sort of the time for that request. That way, if there were requests for a hearing, it could be dealt with through the agenda and placed onto the December 3rd agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Commissioner Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just to be clear with our legal counsel, the reason I put as part of the motion to have a board member or chairman, so we can work out some of these details. Obviously, I did not expect us to come in here today and sort everything out. So my recommendation is we can spare Mr. Wancheck to have to continue to sit here, because this is unpleasant for everyone in this room. My suggestion to the board, and I'm speaking to the board now, is that, Mr. Chairman, you are representative to address this issue, that Mr. McCormick, you bring these issues to our chair. If we need to put an agenda item where there's a hearing, we can move forward and go from there. But I think trying to air out all this right now at this point is counterproductive. That's just my, my assessment, sitting here. The board may disagree, but...
That's kind of why I recommended Commissioner Smith, because of his experience and knowledge, to make this transition as smooth as possible.
I completely concur, and I think we're prolonging something that, that's very painful, and we're picking scabs at this point. I do, I think we need to move forward. I think a timeline, though, will, will come, is definitely something we need to, to be considerate of, as for sure. But let's, let's move forward with this, this, this evening, this, this afternoon to make sure, I don't want any loose ends that can be addressed while we're here, but I don't want to prolong it any longer. I think we're just, we're, we're babbling through this, and it's not good. We need some time to, some of us need some time to think about it. This is all fresh and new, and this has been quite, quite quick and expeditious, as for certain. So let's move back to our agenda. Is there anything else from administration? Anything from county attorney?
Well, I was going to go back to, I think, Commissioner Johns and Commissioner Walter, and I think the, the board's sense, as expressed earlier, grateful to be in St. Johns County, grateful for what we have here. I did want to go back for a moment, and I apologize, and I'm not going to have the board unduly spend any more, any more time on this. I will tell you, as, as the county attorney, as I expressed, the county administrator is, is a statutory role and is provided for by ordinance. So I, I would put it this way, unless otherwise directed by this board, I will consider the next senior administrator, that being Darryl Locklear, for my purposes, when I need to interact with a, with a county administrator, until, you know, the chair, working with the county, is able to effectuate the, the transition to the, to the individual as, as described through the motion earlier today. So unless otherwise directed by the board, I, I'm announcing my intent on how to interpret the word county administrator with the staff we have. And I, I need not say more unless otherwise directed by the board.
All right, Commissioner Barker?
I want to make sure that I'm very clear, so we're all on the same page. What my understanding is, what we just did, is we just appointed the chairman to, to, to work through those, those issues. I understand what you're doing, Mr. McCormick. I, I get it. But that's not the direction we gave. The direction we gave, let me just be clear, so we're on the same page. The direction we just voted on was the chairman to oversee and, and to, to fill that. Whatever gap, you know, there could be a two-day gap, a week gap, I don't know. That's not what we're going to sort through with Mr. Wancheck sitting here. That's something that y'all can work out. But I, I want to make sure I'm clear on what my intent was and what we put out there. I want to make sure we're all on the same page here, because what you just said is not what, my understanding that we just decided. So we've had some confusion recently, where this board makes a decision, and staff interpret it differently. So I'm not, I'm not giving you a hard time. I just want to make sure we are clear, crystal clear, on what guidance that, excuse me, I believe that we've just given. Members of the board, if I've said something out of line or incorrect, please correct me. But I want to make sure, and again, Patrick, I appreciate it. You're doing your job. You're trying to outline, but I want to make sure I'm doing my job by making sure we're, we're clear here. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dean?
I would simply add that commencing at 5:00 PM today, and until such time as Hunter Conrad assumes... Conrad assumes his position as interim county administrator, your dealings, in my opinion, should be with Commissioner Smith, Chairman Smith. Obviously, you're going to have communication with any staff you wish, but with respect to any decisions to be made, any direction, that needs to come directly from our chairman. That's my position.
Anything else? Anything else from legal?
Mr. Chair, and apologize. Commissioner Blocker, I may not have heard exactly, and perhaps Commissioner Dean just made it more clear for me, is the proposed person that would, through a mechanism, come over and act as the county administrator, would that be Hunter Conrad, or would that be the present deputy, Brad Bradley? I may have heard it wrong. Or would that be to be determined?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely.
My understanding is, is that the clerk of the court is still in his position as clerk of the court. Obviously, there are some things that would have to be worked out for him to take a leave of absence or withdraw from that position, based on what we've done here today. So, again, Patrick, these are details that I'm hoping that you can get with our chairman, who we've appointed and worked through. I apologize to you, because I feel I have not been clear. I thought I was clear. Obviously, I was not, because we continue to have questions, and I appreciate your job, but.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, we kind of outlined, you know, I don't know how many more times I can tell you, you know, these are, these are, I would expect you, as our county attorney, to raise these issues with Commissioner Smith.
Understood. I think I got it.
Are we, are we clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's my intent. The board, board members may see this differently, so I would.
What I'll do is I'm going to be ready to make a phone call to Hunter Conrad and see if we, how long it'll take. That'll be helpful as well. Anything else from office of county attorney? All righty. All hearts and minds clear. Seeing nothing else to come before this board, we are hereby adjourned.